Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, let's stand for a moment of prayer, please. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we are grateful, Lord, for another beautiful day. We're thankful, Lord, that as we go into the spring season, that oh, you're bringing life ahead and everything's green enough for the next, for this coming year. Lord, guide and go with us as we go forward. Be with us during this meeting. Be with us as we do what is best, hopefully, for the community and in Pickens County in general. Guide and go with us, I humbly pray, in heaven's sweet name we pray. Amen. And while we're standing, while we're standing, could you please just pledge allegiance for us?
I will. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Baby Cedar. All right. Before we go into item number four on the amendments to the agenda, we've got some awards we'd like to give out. So if y'all will bear with us here just one second. Ms. Weaver, Mackenzie Weaver. Congratulations. I'm gonna read this as we go. Pickens County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize Ms. Mackenzie Weaver, PHS 1,000 Points Club. That is a remarkable feat. Let me read this. Pickens County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize Ms. Tori Williams, PHS 1,000 Points Club also. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I know Ms. Williams has to leave here just a little bit to go to her, is it Amco Electric?
Uh, yeah. Scholarship.
Scholarship, hopefully. And y'all leave, please, you're more than welcome to stay. We're not gonna run along because of Jones Mountain Project we got. Hopefully we get that cranked out, but if we have, if y'all have to leave, we understand. But thank y'all very much for being here tonight. Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us down to item number four under the amendments to the agenda. Uh, Ms. Lacy, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
There are three.
All right. Which three have we got here? B, C, and D on item? All right, I'm gonna take these one at a time under the amendments to the agenda. We add item B to the consent agenda, which is the Golden Deed Award. We add item C to the action items as a Jones Mountain project or road. And then items D to action items on the roundabout lighting assistance. I need a movement of second to approve the amendments to the agenda.
A movement of second.
Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. So that'll bring us on down to, uh, to those amendments. So, uh, let me look at this one here. Uh, approval. Item at this time, that turns us over to employee recognition. And that is an item that Ms. Denny has been handling, uh, something she has started. So Ms. Denny, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a big deal. It's a 20-year recognition, and we have a proclamation for Mr. Philip Dean if he'll You know, what's wonderful is we can ask you anything about any department, and you have some knowledge of it.
I've been around.
It's wonderful. Uh, I'm going to read this, if you'll indulge me. Honoring Philip Dean for 20 years of faithful service to the citizens of Pickens County. Whereas since the formation of Pickens County in 1853, our citizens have relied upon the local government to provide for the health, safety, and well-being of the community. And whereas any endeavors of any organization succeed or fail because of the people involved, very true, and whereas it appears that Philip Dean entered service to the citizens of Pickens County on March the 19th, 1999, and has continued his career working for the Pickens County Water Department. And whereas it is proper and fitting to recognize an individual who has made Pickens County a better place to live and work by such diligent and faithful service. Now, be it therefore resolved that Philip Dean be and is commended for 20 years of faithful service.
We gotta get this together. I knew it, right? Right, Mitch?
Yeah, I see it. Well, women are right.
Exactly right. Let me see this, man. That doesn't weigh 25 pounds like those marbles. Good, good. Thank you, Nick. Grab that.
Thanks.
Ms. Williams, if you watch that, that dust, although that blue dress will be quite clean. All right, thank you, Ms. Denny. That brings us down to the consent agenda. Item number seven. Uh, on the consent agenda, we have the Pickens First Reader Proclamation. Um, we have read this, I think y'all got a copy of that when we read it written when we did the signing. Uh, so it, as it goes, whereas first readers formerly known as the First Foundation, that's F-E-R-S-T, childhood literacy was charted by the state of Georgia in 1999 as a result of the Georgia citizens robbing first. Whereas Roydy Club of Jasper brought this childhood literacy program to Pickens County in 2009 and shipped the first two books in May of 2009. Whereas the Pickens County community worked together to grow the program to reach 70 to 75 percent of all children under the age of five and is third in the state of Georgia in percentages of children that are reached. Whereas 114,000 free agent appropriate books with literacy support materials was mailed in December of 2018 to a Pickens child, Pickens County child. Whereas first readers is a four-star charity and ranked number one in reading and literacy charities in the state of Georgia by Charity Navigator. Whereas research has continually shown that when adults read aloud to children from birth, it promotes, it promotes increased language development and better understanding of language, which leads to the literacy success. Whereas the local first readers of Pickens County program is making a difference in our community, and our children are more ready to learn when entering kindergarten. Whereas the Burnell Equinox occurs on May 20th, 2019, and marked the first day of spring 2019. Be it therefore resolved that March 20th through the 27th of 2019 is proclaimed as first readers week throughout the county of Pickens, state of Georgia, and USA. Signed, Robert P. Jones, Pickens County Commissioner's Chair. All right. Under item B, the Golden Deed Award Proclamation for Mr. Jesse Hunter. And if I may, Jesse Hunter, Golden Deed Award recipient, proclamation, whereas this will be the 34th year that the Pickens County Retired Educators Association has awarded the Golden Deed to an outstanding citizen of Pickens County, and whereas the Golden Deed Award recipient was chosen by strict criteria set forth by the service organizations of Pickens County in the Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Jesse Hunter was chosen to receive this prestigious award for doing an excellent job in volunteering for numerous service organizations in Pickens County. Whereas Jesse Hunter has a caring heart, a willingness to serve the community, and has given unsuffishly to the people of Pickens County. Whereas Jesse Hunter plays an intricate role in our community and as a person of high moral character and integrity. Now therefore be resolved, the Pickens County Board of Commissioners hereby is pleased to recognize Jesse Hunter, 2018-2019 Golden Deed Award recipient for his outstanding accomplishments, for his dedication to serving and improving the quality of life to the citizens of Pickens County, dated March 13th, 2019. All right. That brings us down to item number eight under old business. Do we have any old business? All right. Brings us under item number nine under new business. Do we have any new business?
None of the new business.
All right. That brings us down to item number 10 under the financial report, and I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Fay Harvey to walk us through that, please.
Okay, thank you. This is the finance report for the period ending February 28th, and that's two months of our 2019 fiscal year. So the expenditure budget should be, should not exceed 16.7 percent. On the, um, on the revenue side, the total revenue through the end of February was $2,033,869. For the expenditures, under the general government functions, expenditures were $451,165, and that's 12.6 percent. Under judicial, the expenditures were $424,800, and that's 11.71 percent. Under the public safety functions, the total expenditures were $1,845,643, and that's 13.11 percent. If you notice that EMA is slightly over the percentage, they, in January, they pay the code rent amount, which is a large item, a large item in one of their budget lines. So that budget should, um, it should equalize during the year. So then we go to the public works budgets, and those total $536,254. And the same is true for the, um, the road department, they're at 19.11, but they have some budget capital outline items, and that was a large, one of the large line items. They spent $132,000 in January, so that budget will equalize also during the year. For the health department, the search center and the MATS program, $16,837, and that's 5.38 percent. For culture and recreation, $103,844, and that's 10.27 percent. For housing and development, the expenditures are $74,895, and that's 11.38 percent. So the total, um, total general fund expenditures through February are $3,453,437, and that's 13.12 percent. So that's currently about 3.6 percent under the allotted level for that period. For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditure for $206,118, and that's 8.54 percent. For the airport expenditures were $67,683, and that's 14.89 percent.
All right, any, any further questions from Ms. Harvey?
Just a quick one, Fay. Would you like to give commissioners a heads up when the audit's gonna be taking place?
Uh, yes. The, um, the auditors were here the last week in February to do the, um, the elected officials' offices and, um, do some of our testing. They will be here all, all next week if they start on Monday to do our field work. So, and we were, we were ready for that. So if you should go somewhere.
So you've been all week, Fay, everything's ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Any other questions from Ms. Harvey? All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Fay. Appreciate that. That brings us down to action items, um, under the, uh, under 11 approved, approved minutes, A approved minutes. We had a board meeting on February the 21st, 2019. Uh, you were sent a copy of that through the email, and we got your hard copies. Uh, any, any additions, deletions, corrections that we need to make on that, everything looked good when I went, so I didn't know if y'all seen anything or not. All right. Need a movement of second to approve?
Movement of second.
Have a movement of second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right. And also we have a, on item number two, work session on March 7th, 2019, the same, you've got, you've got a copy of the, of the minutes as well as a hard copy. Any corrections, deletions, anything that looked out of the ordinary? All right, that being said, any movement of second for approval?
Movement of second.
Having a movement of second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right, that brings us down to rezon request. Do we have any rezoned requests? No. We do not have any rezoned requests. All right. That brings us down to item number C, which is Jones Mountain Road. I know most of y'all have heard about the issue we had with the landslide at Jones Mountain. And Mr. Dwayne Comer, that, that represents EXP, which is the engineering company that the county has had on for quite some time, doing some traffic studies just throughout the county, um, and has got a, he's not saying it, and has got a pretty substantial background with, with roads, uh, being an ex-employee, well, not an ex, retired employee from the Department of Transit. Now, does that sound better to him? But anyway, um, we've got you here, we've got the commissioners here, and we are requesting an update, if possible, if you've got any written dates on the proposal, I'd go for it.
All right. This is just a printout of all that we've received from contractors, and then our comments. And also what we put on that, we put a criteria that we've using, you know, to make comments back to them. As you can see on there, we got three proposals, and on each one of them, we sent back, um, the first one, I'll just get it, we got one, but it was pretty much a drawing, we responded to them that we needed what would be a contract that we could agree to as a county, that ties everything down, to make sure we don't get in a situation where, you know, you wanna have the erosion and everything took care of in one contract. The first thing we did, just getting, as the county, Rob called us, the first thing that we started talking about was getting a letter into the state for emergency funding, you know, when you have an issue like this, you can ask for emergency funding. I know it's being looked at, I know it's being looked at this week, we don't have that amount they're gonna come back with, but I feel like it'll probably shortly, probably sometime next week.
And to, and to allude to that, to give you all the, I got a, a text last night from Ms. Emily Dunn, that's our DOT board, state board, that represents us out of Fannin County. And, uh, she was already into one or two meetings yesterday, and she gave me a kind of positive email to the fact that it looks like it's positive, but she couldn't give us a, a exact figure. And, and the reason why, let me rephrase it publicly, the reason why we're kinda looking for the exact figure, 'cause it'd be handy for it to go to the barn, all this money, and see exactly how much, and also the question that we had, if we go ahead and get the money to go ahead and start the road repair, the money that the state's gonna give us, is it gonna be able to pay the debt down to that particular issue? And that's, I think, me and Fay was waiting on the answer for that.
And I think that, I talked to, I actually called the district engineer today, and he called and talked to him, they got back, they asked, actually asked a couple of questions, I'm probably gonna give you a call, Rob, about some things. We've answered some questions, we actually sent the two proposals that we thought was viable to them, um, and, um, and I can give y'all copies of this, I'll give them to you in just a minute. This was, but like I said, this was the first proposal. If you want a copy of it, I can just give you one to look at, but I got no response on our comments. And what our comments was for is to create a situation to where we don't, y'all led a contract, we come up with a price, and all of a sudden, then when they get in to do the work, they won't do something, they won't agree with us because they don't feel like that fit everything. And the only way you fit everything is to get everything in your package. And our comments back to them were to make sure all the drainage was took care of and the runoff. And I also got with them today, David McFarlane, he's with EXP, and Eugene Hopkins with EXP also, he's also retired DOT like myself, actually worked drainage, erosion, pretty much for the department for many years, pretty much the drainage expert and everything that we had to have to take care of. And David's worked many years in Georgia, Florida, and, uh, we worked with, you know, all worked together on this. But this one, we didn't get a response, but I just wanted to show it to you, and that's pretty much, the other two, I know the other two, Cam, the one, is a PDH Associates Incorporated, they were actually out there yesterday, Hopo, and also, I'll give you a copy of it, GSI, uh, if you got a copy of this?
I got a copy of that. I remember it right away, Ben.
You want a copy, Ben?
Sure.
Uh, they started, they was out there working yesterday to answer some of our comments back to them, and then this is GSI. They're, they were also out there yesterday with EPD, uh, the environmental folks, to make sure that what they were doing, keep themselves and the county out of an issue with, you know, EPD with the slide that crossed the creek, and the way it broke off and slid down, and you got that pile of dirt right there at it. But we went through, they both called, they are actually the two companies, uh, Cam and GSI have got back with us to answer comments. They're working, you know, they're gonna send us answers to our questions, which hopefully will type up the proposal, and I hope maybe both of us out there with each other, you know, they know that there's two of them working at it, so, um, that, that'll be a positive thing also. But the things we looked at, as you can see right there on our criteria, is just the things that I know the county was interested in, understanding the project's components, and the completeness of the proposal for a resolution. We don't want them to get up there and do something, and then the county's about having to maintenance it in six months. If you're gonna spend this kind of money, we want it to be hammered out and, and a good, a good plan going forward. And the second one, contractor demonstrated experience performing similar works, and I know that these companies have performed that similar work and done this type of work. Adequacy, viability, longevity, and long-term maintenance requirements, and they'll make sure that it's a very good and stable, so you want problems in the future. Overall cost of the project, minimizing environmental impacts, as you know, you're right there at a creek that's running down, it's coming under the road. Then the duration of road closure, I know that's important, uh, 'cause if you look through, one of the, one of them, if I'm not correct, Eugene, one of them, they'll keep the road open, the other one would have to be a, would have to close the road probably, but they're looking at it, they might come back with comments.
One of them, we're pretty sure that they can keep it open, or at least have it back open to local traffic with, in a very short period of time, the other one, we're not sure about yet.
My concern over that is, guys, I gotta, or we, I feel like we need to get, if we can salvage that road, get that one lane open back up, get traffic established, get the markers put up, we can at least get one lane through there. It's not so much, I know it's an inconvenience for a lot of, a lot of the individuals from Gilbert Academy in Pickens, but I'm worried about FAR and EMS trying to get a, trying to get ambulance in that area, 'cause you're talking about 4, 4.7 miles, I think, for an extra round trip scenario to get in there. So that has got, in my opinion, now these other two can speak up, that's gotta be my criteria for getting this project going, 'cause if we get that other, other lane open, and it's gonna take 30 to 50 days to fix it, at least we've got at least some traffic going and getting people in and out in that area up in there.
Which was, which company said they could get it open quickly?
As far as the speed, they really haven't told us the exact time, Emily, Eugene.
Well, it's still contingent upon a contractor committing to a start date. But, but the one, the one that's, uh, GSI of, of Geo, Geo Stabilization International, they basically do what they call in-place stabilization, where right now, today, the road is not safe for public travels, okay? You know, there's a vertical sheer face there that needs to be stabilized. Their first order of business would be to go in and stabilize that existing face, that vertical face, by putting soil nails in. Then as soon as they get those soil nails in place, which this is what they've told us they would do, is their first order of business when they arrive on the scene, then they could put in barricades and barrels, and then, then have the road back open, you know, at least one lane easily back open to traffic at that point.
And the contract that they're looking at would be furnishing the barrels, furnishing the lighting, and, and designing the traffic where we don't get bit, where somebody was to bump somebody.
That should be inclusive in there, in there being, overall being, that's one of the things that they're gonna come back to y'all, right? We need these things done. And, uh, and like I said, we, we gave those comments back to Cam also, when I say Cam, it's the, um, this one, right here, and, yeah, and it's, uh, pretty much, that's GSI, it's the other one, this one right here.
BDH.
BDH. And, um, so we're looking, but both of them have gave viable solutions. So hopefully, when they give us their comments back, and when I say that, they both called yesterday, trying to get comments back to me, one said it'd be the first of the week. The good thing is, is, as y'all know, it hasn't rained for almost, what, seven days, six days now?
Um, yes.
Well, the bottom line is, it needs to dry out, you know, and that's one of the things up there that's helping right now, is it's not raining. So, uh, we're gonna move forward. Hopefully they'll present us with our comments, we'll, we'll give, and say they answered the questions in here, and then, you know, we can make, make a recommendation, I think it's of, of the one of the two, um, you know, as they, make sure they answer the comments that we got out there too then.
Can you, can you give, I know the paper's gonna ask the questions, so let's go ahead and get it out there. When do you think this is gonna happen?
They both told me that, one of them's gonna happen to me today, and the other said the first of the week, so I'm saying maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, next week, I ought to have both, all the answered questions answered, and then I come to you and say, listen, here's what we got. I feel like, then by then, maybe we'll have the amount of money the state's gonna put with it, and then y'all be making a decision.
So we have.
All the information we, and I think that's the best decision.
And I'm just, I'm asking this question to keep the public informed.
Yeah, and that's, that's the main thing.
But there again, we would have, come Tuesday, Wednesday, next week, if you get all the numbers in, we're ready to rock and roll, then we can get, call the special call meeting, get the vote on this.
Because you know, the money, the state money, pretty much, if the commissioner comes back, writes you a letter, says this money's available, pretty much when you put the contract out there, send it back to them, they'll, you get that, you get that money. And then, uh, you know, how I set up with the match, well, y'all gonna be buying more matches against it, because you're gonna be spending a lot of your own money in that, so that oughta be took care of. So it should be, depending on the contractor, when the date, so you can say, I can start work right here, and, and then maybe, you know, that'd be one thing, where they turn their information in, we say, when, when you can start work. You know, and that way, that'll solve the issue of time for all you commissioners, and that way you'll know, uh, when, you know, they can commence with the work.
Well, the, the two companies that are, now, I just wanna be sure that everybody's on board to the fact that, at this point, I don't care which one gets it, I'd like to keep it the cheaper price, but cheaper price is not, that, that lane has got the, you know, we gotta keep that lane open, I want a warranty, five-year warranty, uh, and I can rattle off a few other things we need, but, but I've got, I've got to stay at that criteria, but we need to.
And I think that in our comments, and I sent them to y'all yourself, when I sent them to them, we're trying to address all them things, so the stuff don't come up in the middle of construction, and they say, oh, we left.
Yeah, don't wanna.
And also it's hard, you borrow a certain amount of money, and, and then the state gives you a certain amount of money, and goes beyond that, then you're back to, you don't need to be in that situation.
And your questions are going to clarify that it's apples to apples.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
And that's why we just sent them comments based on, based on the criteria that we call out in the county, from what I heard, you know, the needs are, and, uh, so hopefully that'll take care of it.
And this page, and if I may interrupt, this page right here, it's what's critical, this is the actual breakdown of every, more or less every piece of grain of sand and gravel and thing. That's what the DOT needs to justify the numbers that we're talking about.
'Cause they always want, you know, and they usually, especially in an emergency, you'll have some type of cost estimate, and that's what we've divided them with, so they're looking at something that's, um, not just us guessing the number. Right. And those numbers may change based on their recent, uh, answering these comments. And, uh, if you need anything else, like I said, I am actually gonna send a copy of the, this handout I gave y'all, I'm gonna send it to our district engineer to give them that, and they will understand, you know, kinda what y'all are waiting on, but they know that y'all are going, doing your due diligence to get a good contract, we're not gonna be putting this money out there and have a situation where that thing's gonna fail the next time we have a hard rain. That's why Eugene and David, they've really took time and looked at this, and to make sure that we've got a good alternative.
You got any questions on the bonding or anything like that, can you be aware of the overall contract?
Basically, though, you're saying, as soon as we give the, your questions nailed down, for these two contractors, at that point in time is where you turn into DOT. And then that's a pretty quick turnaround as far as.
Actually, they've got it. DOT's got it.
Yeah, just to finalize. Put it down.
And they'll ask questions, and I, I told Rob a while ago, that they'll probably call and may have some questions, and if something we need to answer, we'll answer it for them. And, uh, because you know, the, the bigger your footprint gets out there, though, that's when you start getting into more environmental issues, possibility of, even though it was an emergency, then you start creating things that are beyond the actual emergency to happen.
They're giving us some slack on kind of a submerging situation, but they're not gonna give us a whole lot till they don't want them ready.
And that's something that would be, you just look at that footprint, the amount of impact, as you go in there and clean this up, uh, you know, you know, having my career, I've seen us, we start cleaning something up, we get wet over the worst mist we had, and start cleaning it up, you know, just, you know, cause of weather and everything. If they can get out there and stabilize it first, then whatever happens, you're not destabilizing it, maybe, or anything like that.
So you think best-case scenario, all the stars line up, moons, moons flip around, all this good stuff, that maybe by Tuesday, Wednesday, next week, we might be.
Hopefully we'll know the money, especially, you know, you said you got a call, hopefully we'll know that, have that hammered down, then y'all know what y'all gotta go get with the county, the county's gotta take care of.
I just wanna be sure that you guys are ready to give us a proposal.
Oh, yeah, I think, once we get these comments in, we oughta be fine.
Yeah, I believe, uh, KM contractors said early next week, they would resubmit, so we might need to give them.
GSI was gonna have me today.
Okay.
So it's, I might have it, don't know it yet, but they're, and I thought it was kinda good, they both calling, they was both out there pretty much same time yesterday, so, um, they both were out there working to give us, to answer these questions. And we've got a lot of questions, we asked them, what's there, if you're gonna have a contract, those are the things that need to be in it, to make sure that, you know, we don't have supplemental and change orders and stuff like that, what the contract is with. So, do you have any questions? I mean, I was geared to answering, if you have.
No, other than, uh, just to be sure we, we can try to save that one lane, I'd like to have a, a five-year warranty, won't even have damage, and all done in terms of the future, then of course. then of course, I got it, we've got, we've got to have that one lane any way possible, that one lane's gotta be able, because I, I tell you what, 30, 30 to 50 more days of going around through Price Creek and all that area of areas, we keep the trucks up there about every day, putting ground down.
And if you go, and like I said, it's a, it's a pretty sheer drop-off to him off that edge right there, I mean, it just, the way it's loved, it just went straight down and out, you know, so it's a, but we will, but do, if you have any questions that come back from either the state or anybody, if, if something you want us to answer, just give me a call, and we'll get it, we'll get it answered for you. Or if you wanna refer them to us, that's fine too, you know, and they promise.
One question I was about to put up, it may not be anything to worry about, is if we went ahead and borrowed money to start the project, could we use the grant money to repay that debt? But it sounds like from a chicken and egg thing, we're not gonna be ready to borrow, we're not gonna be ready to do any work until you have these questions answered, and then at that time, it's a pretty instantaneous submission to DOT.
Yeah, and, and if you could, I think though, if you do a contract, I don't know, if you gotta have all the money in hand, I didn't.
Right by state law, well, this guy telling me by state law, I cannot sign a contract till we have money in hand.
And so, once you get that letter, which will probably be an email from the state saying that this much is available to you, then you'll know the number.
And there's no real formula for what our match is, it's just.
Well, I think you're gonna be, well, what you're putting into it will be beyond the match, so, you know, it could be just because of the amount of the project. But, but like I said, we'll, we'll get that to y'all as quick as we can next week, you know, with our recommendation, and then you can go forward, and hopefully we'll have, yeah, the good thing is, is I do have a, you know, just, I know who to talk to, you know, people I've called in there, and I know they're working on it, and, and as you know, this wasn't the only slide in North Georgia the other way, where there was a few, even on state routes, we've had, you know, a lot of state route down here's also, a lot of water and all right.
Any further questions from Mr. Conner?
What can y'all?
No, no, thank you very much, man, I appreciate it.
Y'all have any though, just give me a call, okay?
All right. That brings us down to item number D, under the roundabout lighting assistance, I have got a contract here from the DOT that I'd like for my two other commissioners to look at in the next few weeks. The, that contract, what that thing tells us is, they're wanting to build a roundabout at, at the White Talking Rock, which we all, this old time is called the White Talking Rock, in the Wyatt Blaine, but the agreement is, they want the county to sign a contract that we're gonna take care of all the lighting on the, on the state road. I want y'all agree to do that, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out why I need to take care of, and Dwayne, you might be able to have, I know you don't work for the state no more, but is it necessary for a county to keep up the lighting on the state roundabout?
The lighting though, is just, is like, it's like on street lighting, Craig, Eugene, Eugene's working that also, it's not like, it's just to make sure that it's illuminated, the roundabout itself, and that's usually an agreement that's sent out.
So you illuminate a roundabout at night, where then it's all I need to clean up the wrecks when they happen?
No, actually, it just helps you be able to see the, people see what's coming on as they come into the roundabout, the signing and everything, which they're, you'll be able to see with the illuminated signs and the striping on the road, but we like to put lighting out.
Is state policy to have lighting on roundabouts?
I understand that, I, I mean, I, I agree, if they're, if they're determined to build them, I have no problem, the issue I'm having is me having to pay the bill.
They always ask the locals to pay, right Eugene?
Yes.
He was in the lighting department.
But it's not to put the lights, y'all just paying for the electricity.
It's generally considered the energy, the operation, and the maintenance.
Once you lived with that one down the way, you run dogs, you have. It's only west end.
And that can be an issue, you know, location, and it was, how you got power to the lighting that you got out there. So I've had that situation also, due to the rulers of an area, or, but lighting, it does, it helps tremendously.
Well, I brought the subject up when they sent me this stuff here to pop back a few weeks ago, and you know, can we go with solar? Well, they said, no, this, this was done, all this engineering was done before solar come out, okay? Then can we go LED? That would cut down the expense, I just, it just, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but.
They should be able to do LED.
It should be, LED is also, it's cheaper, it's not, Eugene, on the power side, or power side?
Yeah, LED is cheaper on the power side.
It, it, there's still a lot of ambiguity in the actual design guidelines associated with using LED lighting in the roadway environment. If you fully illuminate the area to meet the, the lighting standards that are based on, you know, your traditional metal halide or high-pressure sodium lights, you end up typically with more LED light fixtures than what some people feel is actually needed there, and then when you factor in, you know, the additional cost of the fixtures, the call savings aren't realized nearly as much.
No, a quick question, Paul, we got to y'all kind of pin here, say for instance, we go ahead and, we pay for the power, we pay for the, pay for the power, do we have to do an agreement with some of the, some of the individuals that own proper runner to do a easement? Do we have to buy the property and put the power pole?
More likely, where's this location at?
Oh, one of them's gonna be, you know, 136 at Langestore going towards Carter Lake, that wide right there.
They're probably buying, it's a state project, they're probably gonna be buying right-of-way to relocate utilities anyway, and at that, at that point, you just make sure that the, the lights will be run all along those utilities.
So they would deal with the fact that they get, all, all thing they're wanting us to do is just pay the power bill.
Yeah, generally, those lights would be new light fixtures, you know, poles, breakaway bases, that are located within the right-of-way along the perimeter of the roundabout.
Who's responsible for that?
It'll be part of the design and build, under the contract, is, is it?
Yeah, but if they get snapped off, who'd be responsible?
If it's on the state route, it would be, it's a state route issue.
Okay.
Now, intersection would be a state route, it's 136, and it'd be the state.
Okay.
You know, and the reason, like Eugene said, those type poles, is therefore the safety issues, something like this one, it does break loose.
All right, any, any further questions about that? All right, that brings us down to, thank y'all very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have all three commissioners looked at this road? Have you all been up to look at it?
I have, many times, yeah.
You have a view?
I've just seen the pictures, I plan to get up there.
Okay, I'm, I'm just a dumb country boy, I know there's a big hole on the right side, there's plenty of room, get in the bank, CAM could have that road open in two hours.
Do you understand?
Two hours.
Yeah, the, the, what the state is telling us, though, the issue I've got with it is, I've gotta have an engineer tell me it's safe enough to put traffic on it, or I can put traffic on it, and that's what I'm trying to push to get to that point.
So how are they gonna tell you it's safe enough?
How what?
How are they gonna tell you it's safe for?
Well, they're, they're gonna, they'll look at it, they'll do it in a lane for it, and then they'll put a stamp on it, and it makes it their liability.
Okay, another question, how, how are they gonna do the shortest thing of, as far, where are they gonna start?
Well, it all depends on which company we go with, the, and that's something that EXP is working with, on which company we wind up going with as we go, go forward on this project. We're not gonna be.
And we can tell you, there's one, Eugene, one of them's using soil nail.
Yeah.
To stabilize the bank, and it literally, you go into the embankment and stabilize it, what's there?
You drill in a nail, a very large drill nail.
And it, it stabilizes what's there, and then, and the other one does pretty much a manning, go ahead and tell them, Eugene, you got that.
Well, as, as Dwayne was talking about, the, the one option, using the soil nails, they essentially drill like four-inch holes that go 30 foot back into the, the existing bank that's there, and then those are pumped full of grout, that, that, it's just like a steel rebar in concrete at that point, and then they can put a, a mat of reinforced steel on the face of that slope, and then spray it with shot concrete, or pneumatic applied concrete, then at that point, you can put any kind of truck you want on top of that embankment, it is structurally sound and stable.
And in both these, well, I know that, that one, one company said they can have that done within the week, once we get the contract, or hopefully.
Well, when they start.
Once they start, they can.
They have to start first.
Then we get that road opened up.
And they'll, they'll stabilize that to that point, like Eugene said, the other ones are different, it uses the more of a terracing and mading.
Yeah, you've got the, it, it's more like building a road from the, from the, from the base up, you know, you have to go to the bottom and start building it up in layers, and with that one, because there's a vertical face there that's sheared off, you basically have to cut that back, kind of like a stairway, you know, you can't just pile dirt up against a vertical face there, you know, it won't compact well, and you'll have some issues that kind of come back to haunt you later on.
How, how much wider is the shoulder though, if you were going, once they're finished?
You mean, compared to what's out there now, I mean, once it's all built, it's gonna.
What's originally?
It's gonna look.
Scooted over toward the creek?
No, it's, it's gonna be substantially right where, where it originally was at, it's just gonna be rebuilt and reconstructed in that location. I think I know what you're getting at, is why can't you just cut the road back into that bank that's there on the, on the uphill side of the road? Now, that, that's a possibility, but you kind of start getting into permitting issues at that point, which end up having a lot more design and engineering costs, a lot more permitting costs, and more environmental studies, you're not repairing the road at that point, you're rebuilding it and relocating it, and it kind of, it's gonna, it's gonna end up getting way outside your scope of budget, and kind of open up other issues that it's best left alone.
Because the drainage is one thing that's gotta be took care of also out there, the way the water, even the pipes that y'all are, you know, all them things has gotta be looked at by this contractor, to make sure you don't have that situation where the water builds up, and also what it does, that natural slough where it broke off there, you know, water got in there, I guess from all this rain, and it, when you have that much groundwater, and all of a sudden, what happens is just like on a state road, which we've, you know, we feel like they're built, they're compacted, you have the same issue, all of a sudden, thing's fine for 100 years, but you get that right amount of groundwater in there, and all of a sudden, it just turns loose, and you have them straight shears, and, and that's what you got up there.
Donnie, any further questions?
Okay.
Yeah.
Which hopefully y'all can get it, so that, you know, whoever who does this, they will, you know, open that line, of course, we'd appreciate that very much, that the dirt road they're having go through, there's a lot of places on that, you know, that's very narrow, the niches are real deep, I mean, there's already been several wrecks in there, but one thing I just wanna ask about is, there's some way that you can put, I don't know how you do it, but anyway, there's tractor-trailer trucks trying to go through there.
There shouldn't be tractor-trailer trucks.
Well, it had the road blocked here the other day for the tractor-trailer that tried to go through there, and so there's nothing to tell them or not to.
Cameron, check the, check the program with those signs, and see why that, you know, it's local traffic only, no tractor-trailers, and they, you know.
So we need this. Last week, we had a tractor-trailer in there that was stuck.
Stayed there for several hours still.
We need to get that thing programmed.
Okay, and I think we can add that to those message boards we've got up there for the morning.
Either, either add it to the message boards, or have Nathan do us a sign in the morning to pick up there, no tractor-trailers, none, but when tractor-trailer goes out there, we'll call the sheriff's department, they will, they will impound the truck, and then arrest the driver, and whatever they gotta do, but, but they need to stop that, and we're trying to hold that road, well, what we got up there, we got a 12-foot wide road, we have no right-of-way, no easement, so we're trying to hold that together to give people a way in and out, but it's just local traffic only.
Yeah, we'll put it on that message board there at 136 intersection, and that way, you know, they won't be committed.
Yeah, we need to do it both ways, because kind of misleading on the, on the south end side, where it goes up on West Price Creek, because all that's, you know, paved and looks like figuring what it is, and all of a sudden, it's kind of grab it hold it, and once they're committed with a 60-foot trailer, it's hard to go back out of them, so.
We'll get some extra signage up there, and hopefully that'll help, get a sign as good as we can.
Okay, and, and if I may, if y'all bear with me just one second, out there, where 136 comes from Talking Rock, and from where, where it comes in down there on, on Burt Mountain Road, let's get us some signs out there where a tractor-trailer won't turn a corner coming up that way. If we don't have them out there, we need to get something out there that.
After, to the church there.
Yeah, and that, yeah, and out there at the church, need to stop, because he, Google's sending a roundabout through there, that's 136, and.
Yeah, which way?
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you. Any further question?